Good afternoon. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 regular scheduled Tuesday, March 19th, Board Meeting. Stephanie, I need my annotator. We will begin with our invocation. Pastor Tandy Mayo. I don't have my annotator, so I don't know what I'm supposed to do. If I could request for everyone to please stand, we're going to have our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I try to always base any prayer that I may have on the Holy Book. Therefore, Galatians 6:9 says this, "Let us not become weary in the doing of the good work, for at the proper time we will reap the harvest if we do not give up." You know, we have set in place, God, we have set in place five pillars of excellence, Father. I'm not going to go over each one of them, but Father, we have done that so that we can better serve our taxpayers and the community, Father. Father, I pray that you will give us every and every leader, Father, so they do not grow weary in their leadership role, Father. Oh, Father. God, I just ask that the task that may seem overwhelming at times and even exhausting, Father, but I pray that every leader will recognize that they are assigned to do your will. Therefore, I know that at the right time, they will reap the harvest or rewards if they do not give up. So, Lord, I pray for divine strength for every leader that may or may not, they may not rely on themselves, but on you, I pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
So I would like to announce that Commissioner Dee Anglin is on the phone. He is participating via phone. I'd like to call the meeting officially to order. We will be removing consent agenda item under county manager regarding criteria for renaming building. It will be discussed at the board retreat and brought back at a later date. SLOSS will be adding an item after the consent agenda, reference to the Western Parallel Condemnation Partial 13. This item was approved on 2024, but there is a small correction which needs to be made, and Mr. Rocky Romero will explain when he presents the item. We will begin with proclamations and recognitions. First, we'd have recognition of mock trial teams Eagles Landing High School and Woodland High School presented by Melissa Robinson. Melissa will have two separate high school recognitions, and she will present Eagles Landing first, take a picture with the BOC, and then present Woodland High School, and we'll take a separate picture.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Tonight, we have a certificate of achievement presented to Eagles Landing High School for their mock trial team. The Henry County Board of Commissioners extends its deepest congratulations to the Eagles Landing High School mock trial team in recognition of their outstanding season and besting 137 other teams to be named the 2024 McDonough Regional Champions during the March competition. Thank you for your wonderful representation of Henry County, and we wish you all the best in your future endeavors from the Board of Commissioners. If we could have the Eagles Landing team come up for a picture? So tonight, we have a certificate of achievement for the Woodland High School mock trial team, and the Henry County Board of Commissioners extends its deepest congratulations to the Woodland High School mock trial team for their outstanding performance at the district championships and winning the competition with three Best Attorney Awards and two Best Witness Awards. The Woodland team is one of just 18 teams and the only team from Henry County to have advanced to the 2024 state competition. Thank you for your wonderful representation of Henry County, and we wish you all the best in your future endeavors. And if we could have you come up for a picture as well?
How y'all doing? Y'all looking so nice.
Some of y'all can come and stand back here, too.
You guys can come up on the back row. Alright, everybody ready? One, two, three. One more time. One, two, three.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Great job. Ready? One, two, three.
Can I just want to acknowledge Judge Daniel Roberts, who is one of our Superior Court Judges. Thank you, Judge Roberts. Thank you for taking on this task. We appreciate everything that you do in our community and for our young people.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation is a proclamation for Otis Smith, retired Lieutenant Colonel and Chaplain. He is celebrating his 90th birthday.
Thank you, Chair. So it's time to deliver a very special proclamation, celebrating Otis A. Smith upon the occasion of his 90th birthday. Whereas March 22nd, 2024 marks a very special day, as Henry County resident and retired Lieutenant Colonel Otis A. Smith will celebrate an exciting milestone for his 90th birthday. Whereas Mr. Smith is a Vietnam veteran, chaplain, and retired Lieutenant Colonel of the United States Army, where he proudly served his country with honor as a captain in the 3rd Battalion, 506th Infantry ABN. And whereas while serving as captain in the military, he earned numerous accolades and awards, among them the Bronze Medal Star and the Air Medal for notorious achievement while participating in aerial flight. And whereas while in service in his role as Army Chaplain, he was hailed as a hero in Fort Gordon for climbing up 170-foot water tower to save a despondent soldier who was seeking to take his own life. And whereas because of his compassion and godly spirit, he was able to talk with the soldier and bring him down off the tower successfully after a harrowing 30 minutes, and subsequently detailed many of his experiences as an Army Chaplain in an autobiography he wrote titled, "The Vietnam and Combat Journal of Captain Otis A. Smith, Battalion Chaplain." And whereas Chaplain Smith was not only a hero in the military, but was a hero in the fight for civil rights, as an activist who walked beside Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and worked with Medgar Evers during the 1960s to secure equal rights for those who were disenfranchised. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners offers its sincerest appreciation for his military service and wishes Mr. Otis A. Smith a very happy birthday and continued good health, and encourages the entire Henry County community to join in celebrating this esteemed veteran and outstanding American. We get a picture with Mr. Smith?
Ready? One, two, three. One more time. One, two, three.
Thank you. Appreciate you, sir. Thanks, bro. Appreciate you.
Next item on the agenda is the recognition for Southern Crescent Women in Business, presented by Stephanie Braun. As we continue to celebrate Women's History Month, we also want to recognize women that are doing amazing things in our community. And so, Stephanie, if you would proceed with the proclamation or recognition.
Yes, ma'am. Recognition of Southern Crescent Women in Business, Inc., whereas Ariel Shaw, MBA and founder of Southern Crescent Women in Business, Inc., a conglomerate of women-owned businesses and women in business, have worked to change the economic landscape in the Southern Crescent region for women-owned small businesses. Whereas the organization continues to seek to level the economic playing field in assisting women-owned businesses using its platform to help strengthen and build key relationships with key governmental agencies and those in the private sector. And whereas Southern Crescent Women in Business was the first organization to find small businesses in the Southern Crescent region through their Shark Tank-style annual funding pitch, having funded six women-owned businesses to date. Whereas Southern Crescent Women in Business was the first organization to create a women's business center dedicated to women-owned businesses that included private office suites, training rooms, and a podcast studio. Whereas Southern Crescent Women in Business, Inc. has created one of the first local published magazines to enter a major retailer whose sole efforts are dedicated to promoting local women-owned businesses. Whereas Southern Crescent Women in Business was the first women-focused organization in the Southern Crescent region that created a multimedia approach and platform to promote local women-owned businesses through their global podcast, Amazon streaming television series, published collaborative books, and local magazine, and have established partnerships with international media brands to further elevate local women in business. Whereas Southern Crescent Women in Business has elevated the women leaders of the Southern Crescent region by establishing the top 50 Women of Influence in the Southern Crescent, a published list exclusively for women in the region. Whereas with this increase, Southern Crescent Women in Business, Inc. continues the work to provide the foundational support that is needed for women-owned businesses and women in business in the Southern Crescent area and beyond, and will help build upon important relationships with the key stakeholders and community and business leaders to provide access of information, technical training, and funding to women in businesses. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners do hereby present this proclamation this March 19th, 2024, to Southern Crescent Women in Business, Inc. and Ariel Shaw, MBA, in recognition of outstanding service in the Southern Crescent region in Henry County. Like to come forward?
Business, please come forward.
Give my steps. That right.
Alright, here we go. Ready? One, two, three. One more time. One, two, three. Thank you all.
Sure. Matthews, please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, March 19th at 6:30 PM. Under the airport, we have a resolution approving Croy Engineering Task Order Number 18 in the amount of $106,309.02 for engineering design services for runway rehabilitation and grooving at the Atlanta Speedway Airport utilizing capital improvement plan funds. Under the county attorney, we have a resolution to correct a Scribner's error regarding Resolution Number 24-79 for the 2024 qualifying fees. Under the county manager, we also have a deannexation, which is D-E-A-X-2302, does not require public hearing. Henry County has received a request for deannexation of a total of two properties located at 58 and 68 West King Road, consisting of a combined 12.41 plus or minus acres in land lot 114 of the 3rd District. The parcel numbers are 022-01033000 and 02201032000. The properties or parcels are located in District 1. Under the Emergency Management Agency, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners to update the statewide mutual aid agreement. Under Facility Maintenance, we have a resolution to award RFP Number 24-23 to Max Air Mechanical, LLC, the annual contract for backflow inspection, testing, and approved repairs on all county backflow devices for the amount of $17,952. Funding is available in the facility maintenance budget. We also have a resolution to award bid Number 24-31 to Prime Pest Solutions of Griffin, Georgia for annual pest control in all county facilities. And under the SWS Department, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the funding of stream credits for Rock Quarry Road in the amount of $958,800. Funding for compensation stream credits is available in the SLOSS project account. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
There's no question in question for the board?
Can I get a motion? Got a motion and a second? All in favor? Is Dee Anglin? Where Dee? Hey Dee. Good. So we have a unanimous vote on the consent agenda. Thank you, County Manager.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Rocky forward to present the condemnation partial 13 that I mentioned earlier. We have a need a correction.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Vice Chair and Commissioners. As you mentioned, Chair, we did have to do a correction. At the March 5th Board Meeting, the Board approved the condemnation for partial 13 of the Western Parallel Parkway project. We're bringing this resolution back to perfect the record. At the approved Resolution Number 2480, we had a driveway easement language in there. It's not a driveway easement. It's actually a fence, a temporary fence easement. There's no monetary involvement on this transaction, so basically, it's just the wording that we need to perfect in order to proceed with the condemnation procedures. I will take any questions.
Can I get a second? Got a motion and a second? All in favor? Dee?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is transportation planning. If I could get Sam Baker, our Transportation Planning Director, to please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Henry County Board of Commissioners. The Atlanta Regional Commission, in short, ARC, is the Regional Transportation Planning Agency for the Atlanta urbanized area. Federal transportation funds flow through ARC to the local governments. So ARC is currently soliciting a prioritized list of transportation projects from the local governments in its jurisdiction to disburse federal transportation funds. In response, the staff has come up with the following transportation project list. Number one, State Route 42 widening from Bill Gardner Parkway to State Route 155, preliminary engineering phase. Number two, Oak Grove Road widening from Jonesboro Road to Jodeco Road, preliminary engineering phase. Number three, Eagles Landing Parkway, Hudson Bridge Road, Eastlake Parkway Road resurfacing from Jodeco Road to State Route 155. Number four, Jonesboro Road resurfacing from I-75 to Rosebud Lane. And number five, Camp Creek Greenway, engineering and design phase. Among these projects, three projects include working in partnership with three municipalities, the city of Stockbridge, the city of McDonough, and the city of Locust Grove. I'm here to let you know that we have signed intergovernmental agreements from these three municipalities, waiting for the board's approval. So the staff recommends approval of this project list for submission to ARC. In addition, I ask for the board's authorization of signing the intergovernmental agreements to share the local match among us, and the percentages are shown in the local match column. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Okay. Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Robertson.
I see what we're doing, intergovernmental agreements, and not only that, to have additional funding to do our resurfacing of our roads. So thank you for being on top of that with the Atlanta Region Commission to ensure that Henry County, you know, we get a pot of the money to bring here for our constituents. So thank you so much for your due diligence and making sure that this happens.
Thank you, Commissioner Robertson.
Commissioner Anglin, any questions, comments?
No. Thank you, Sam.
This is a public hearing. Come on.
Good evening, Chair, Board Members, and Citizens of Henry County. We are actually hearing two rezonings at the same time as they are associated, so we're going to hear RZ-2307 and RZ-2308 as they are the same property. And I'll explain a bit why they're separated like this in just a minute. The property is currently zoned RA and C2. It is off of Highway 81 East and east of Jake Lewis Drive, and the applicant is requesting a complete zoning to C2 General Commercial. The subject property is highlighted in green on each of the maps and is surrounded by commercial and RA zone properties and has a future land use designation of commercial. There are two different rezoning requests because at the time of application last year in January, the properties were split into two different parcels, which have since been combined, and there was a subsequent future land use map request, which has been addressed by our comprehensive plan that we approved in October. So the comprehensive plan is no longer necessary. We're just doing the two rezonings to C2. The applicant is requesting to rezone a total of 3.54 plus or minus acres from RA Residential Agricultural to C2 General Commercial. The future land use designation is commercial, which supports commercial development as proposed. Rezoning would allow for the subject property to be developed in conjunction with the portion of the property that is already zoned C2 for a coffee shop and fast food restaurant per the letter of intent. The property is also within the limits of the Highway Corridor Overlay District, which requires a 10-foot multi-use path, street trees, pedestrian lighting, and enhanced architectural material standards. This particular intersection, starting from Upchurch Road, is slated for future commercial. As such, walkability is encouraged as future plans are made for the surrounding area. Here are some of the comments from different departments. There's nothing that raises any red flags as to why this property can't be developed as presented. So on June 8th, the zoning advisory board recommended approval of both requests with staff recommendations. I do have a couple of conditions I'd like to discuss to shed some light on the project. So the first one is that there will be an architectural design review done with staff before the submittal of any permits and applications. And also, there's going to be a site plan review because after conversation with the county manager and staff, we felt like this plan could actually be a lot more walkable as it has a lot of space. We can probably put the parking behind the buildings to kind of screen them and just create a more green site plan. So the process is that once, if this gets rezoned, they'll come to us, we'll review their site plan, we'll work with them, make some tweaks on the building and the site plan, and then we'll have a better product than what's being proposed right now. And future development in that area, if there are more rezoning requests, we'd like the flexibility to be able to create an area that is consistent in style and architecture and in site plan. We do have some prohibited uses as well. Tattoo parlor, body piercing, vape, laundromats, nail salons, the usual that we put on new commercial developments, especially on the highway corridor. And highway corridor also has other prohibited uses as well. And I'll be happy to take any questions. And this is recommending approval for both RZ-2307 and 2308, in which case, for the public hearing portion, they'll need 20 minutes allotted for both support and not supporting. Thank you.
Are there persons wishing to speak in favor of the request, including the applicant? You have a collective total of 10 minutes to address the board.
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Jared Thompson. I'm with Moore Civil Consultants. I'm with the, I'm the civil engineer working on the client's behalf, and I just came up here to see if y'all had any questions about the rezoning.
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. I guess reserve my time for any rebuttal or explanations if anybody would have any specific questions.
Anyone here that'd like to speak in opposition of this development, please come forward. Stephanie, can you restart the clock? Please state your name, and you have ten minutes.
Erica McDaniel. I actually did not come here with the purpose of this today. Was not aware of it on the agenda. We're here for an entirely different purpose. More so as a person who lives in this community very close with teen drivers, I have concerns and questions regarding the safety and the traffic plans that would be put in place with this. That is a dangerous intersection as it is with no traffic lights, with very hard circumstances already regarding navigating out of that. We've got increased congestion in this area from other development along the eighty-one corridor, and I have concerns on how this would be developed in such a way that with limited visibility there, that it will be safe for my teen drivers and myself to drive with this being put in place there. In addition to the other restaurants, fast food chains, and coffee shops that are coming to our area, is this a good addition with other things that are already planned? Those are questions and concerns that I have that I'd like to know the answer to.
Thank you.
Hello. Good, good, good evening. I just wanted to say, I didn't see-
Could you state your name, please?
Yes ma'am, Abigail Baker. I did not see public storage units listed as part of the list of prohibited other businesses, so I just wanted to see if that was in, as part of the planning for that area.
Public storage facilities, they're restricted by the actual Unified Land Development Code, so it's already written into our big book of codes that they can't go here.
So I do have a couple of questions, and this is Commissioner Wilson's district, and I'll turn it over to him in just a minute. So you're asking to change the, to do the rezoning. What, what, how does this fit with our comprehensive land use?
Yes ma'am.
Our current new comprehensive land use?
Yes ma'am. So currently, from Upchurch to that intersection near Pine Tree that's red on the corner, that's all slated for commercial development. It's supposed to be like a little small node for commercial. We did recently rezone across the street, which is actually Commissioner Anglin's district. We had a commercial rezoning across the street as well, so this plan is directly aligned with the comprehensive plan.
And, and so to address the citizens' concern, what, what is going to be done with regards to any type of traffic signals or? I know that you, you do a traffic impact study, but, you know, what are in the plans to address that issue?
Yes ma'am. So this actually, Highway eighty-one is actually have plans to be widened to four lanes instead of two. It is two lanes right now. They're supposed, supposed to start that by twenty-twenty-six to twenty-thirty-five. As far as the development itself, it does need a traffic impact study, but the property is set off from the road in such a way that, pardon me, that there shouldn't be any issues with site distance. And of course, this has to go through review with DOT, Georgia DOT, and our SPOLOs departments as well.
Madam Chair, but I do have a question about, how long is it going, would they have to submit architectural design or any type of site plan after we approve this? How long would it, they have to submit that, and if they exceed that, what happens?
So-
Timeline?
Our hope is that they do it as soon as possible, within the next month or so. We have provisions in our code that state that if you don't make significant progress on a project within eighteen months, staff is allowed to take that project and have the Zoning Advisory Board and the Board of Commissioners re-review it for further zoning consideration.
And so of course, the traffic study's going to be done, as Terry Rayle said, so, and we'll get a copy of that traffic study as well. Okay, that's all I have.
I don't want to get in the habit of approving stuff that I don't have any type of visual. And so for me, I, I, I'm just going to have a difficult time with that.
Do you want to see-
We, we, we talk about, we do a traffic impact study, but to me, somewhere, the study needs to be done prior to a lot of this because we are proving something, and traffic impact study comes back. I mean, you know, I don't necessarily travel this particular area a lot, but, you know, and I know it sits back off the road, but still people have to pull out.
So to rebut that, all of our departments, like DOT and SPOLOs, they do take a preliminary review of these plans. Fire does as well, before we have what we call a Planner's Review Meeting, where they do take a look at it. It's hard to make hard determinations on properties because it's not engineered, these plans are proposals. But if there was a red flag from SPOLOs or DOT, they would have told us about it, and we've taken it account into this plan. Now, I'd like to keep in mind that this Highway eighty-one, it is a highway. We are growing, so there's going to need to be commercial development. I think what we've done in the comp plan is we've taken that development and put it in these nodes so that it doesn't sprawl so far out in the county, and you have these long stretches of commercial, but that people can go to these intersections and do what they need to do, and then go home.
Can we request a ride-in, ride-out on the state highway? Or does that come from GDOT?
It would have to come from GDOT.
Okay.
They make that determination.
I still want to know what it's going to look like and where it's going to go. I mean, what it's going to be.
I have pictures of the building that they're proposing, but I, I think the buildings can be better, which is why I have the condition for the architectural review. So they, regardless, they still have to come to staff before they, and Commissioners, before they get any kind of permit review, so-
You keep saying they come to staff, but at the end of the day, our vote is what you're asking us for.
Right.
So I want to see what it looks like.
So I have pictures of the building, if you'd like to see that. Yeah.
Madam Chair, we'll get the opportunity to look at this architectural structure before it's approved. He will, he won't bring it back to the Board, but it'll be available for us to look at it.
I don't think that's- And, thank you. And he would like to incorporate stone instead of the stucco, which I think is a good idea. But having the review controls where staff takes in a review and then brings it to that Commissioner, it allows us to have flexibility just in case new or better products come along. If we hamstring ourselves to specific plans and buildings, then we may not get the best product down the road. There was one other building, I'm sorry.
I just think that if you're going to come and ask for a rezoning, that you should have everything in place. It shouldn't be having to come back before us. You want to, you want to vote now, but, but I can't give you a vote now based on what I'm seeing. And that's just me. I'd like to call for a motion for RZ twenty-three dash oh seven.
This, Kamal and myself had a conversation about architectural design for this, and let staff have the final say-so. And actually, the site plan can be adjusted as well through staff. So I'm going to, I'm going to go with staff recommendation, and I'll make the recommendation that we move forward with the rezoning.
Got a motion and a second. Dee, we're calling for a vote. Dee? Commissioner Anglin?
Commissioner Anglin, you still there?
Sorry, sorry, yeah, I am. Sorry, I didn't hit the undo button. Yes, I accept Johnny's motion and the second.
You still there?
Johnny's motion, and then I follow up the second, so aye.
Okay, so we're calling for the vote. Uh huh. All in favor? Obstain? So that was, yeah, okay, all right. So RZ twenty-three dash oh eight.
We just need to make a second motion for, for that one.
There's, got a motion and a second. All in favor? Dee, Commissioner Anglin?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Obstain?
Since you have overlapped them, but we still need to, for the public an opportunity to offer public comments.
Okay.
Since we advertised to.
So is anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Come forward.
My name is Erica McDaniel again. I still have my previously stated concerns, and I know one of the points that were made was that this will set back from the roadway and that traffic, the road will be expanded in the next ten years. This is already a heavily congested road that is already difficult to travel, and it is with the, they've pointed out that there's already zoning for other commercial property that's going to add to the congestion well before the infrastructure's in place to support this. This is going to be a continuing problem, and is this a problem that we need with this type of commercial business in this particular area before we have the infrastructure to support it? It is a dangerous intersection, and with there being no information available about the traffic studies in place, I have concerns. I'm a citizen that lives in this area, and if you had the graphics available for this roadway, as well as the congestion right now on a normal day, this is an area within miles of three schools. Actually, if you go in a separate direction, within five miles of five schools, it is heavily congested, and that is something that I think that should have been taken into consideration and planned for appropriately prior to this being brought. So those are my concerns.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so then we have to do the vote over. Cherry, okay. Okay, you got a comment?
Constituent, can you kind of elaborate on some, some, you know, some things that we can look into with the traffic study?
It has to be reviewed by Georgia DOT and Henry County DOT and our SPOLOs departments. So they're going to take a look at this area and, and as a whole, how many cars are projected to come in and out of this development, and if the roads can handle it. So in their preliminary review, there were no concerns about if the road could handle this kind of development. It's not a giant commercial development, and it's going to be busy between certain hours. So it's a highway, and the traffic impact study will be done for the, for the development as well.
We're motion. Got a second? All in favor? Commissioner Anglin?
Did you hear the Commissioner Anglin?
Yes, aye.
Obstain? Thank you. Resolution by the Henry County Board of Commissioners establishing the Henry County Veterans Advisory Board. Stephanie, if you come forward.
I've been asked to present the resolution establishing the Henry County Veterans Board. The purpose of this board is to advise the Board of Commissioners on the needs of local veterans, the resources available, and programs that could benefit local veterans and their families. The qualifications for this board shall be comprised entirely of veterans who are residents of Henry County. The composition of the board, it shall be composed of a maximum of seven members as follows. BOC chair receives two appointments. District Commissioners receive one appointment. Vacancies shall be filled by the Appointing Commissioner for the unexpired term of original appointment. Removal, the board members shall serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners and may be removed with or without cause by the Appointing Commissioner. If a member misses two or more consecutive meetings without adequate, adequate excuse, the Veterans Advisory Board may, after a majority vote, request removal of that member by the Board of Commissioners and/or the District Commissioner who appointed them. The term will be for four years, to coincide with the Commissioner's term of office. There are no limits to how many terms they may serve. The meetings shall meet at least once monthly at a place within Henry County in the meeting time designated by the Advisory Board. The meeting shall be subject to the Georgia Open Meetings Act. For compensation, it is a voluntary board, and there shall be no compensation for membership. The Board of Commissioners shall make their appointments to the Veterans Advisory Board within thirty days of the adoption of this resolution, and that will be April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Bylaws, the members of the Henry County Veterans Advisory Board shall develop bylaws consistent with this resolution that govern the conduct, meeting, appointment of officers, and activities of the Veterans Advisory Board members, which shall be completed within sixty days of the appointment of the members. Any questions?
And so what I'd like to say is that we have had a lot of veteran groups, organizations in the community ask for this veteran boards because they are, you know, they want to address the needs of veterans in the community. And I think anybody that has served our country, you know, we, we owe them this. This particular, we kind of mirrored what Clayton County Veteran Board had in place. And so if there are any questions or concerns from any of Commissioners or any comments. Okay. Hearing, I'd like to get, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Commissioner Anglin?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We don't have anyone signed up for public comment, approval of the minutes, February six, twenty-twenty-four, BOC. Can I call for- Can I call for a motion for approval of the minutes? Got a motion to approve? Got a second, all in favor? Commissioner Anglin?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Upcoming meetings and events, March twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, is a call BOC retreat to be held in Columbus, Georgia. April ninth, twenty-twenty-four, nine AM is our regular scheduled BOC meeting. And then, April twenty-third, at six-thirty, is our next regular scheduled BOC meeting. Any comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned, thank you. Oh, oh, before we leave, I do just want to acknowledge and ask everyone to keep in your prayers, the Price family. Mayor Robert Price was the mayor of the city of Locust Grove, and he passed this weekend. So, please keep the family in your prayers. I know that his services will be Thursday at one PM, and we just like to ask the public to, at two PM. So, we'd just like to ask everyone to just please keep the Price family and the Locust Grove community because that was a huge, this is a huge loss to our community. Any of the commissioners like to say anything? I know that Mayor Price represented your area, Commissioner Wilson.
Ma'am, he was a great leader, he was a good friend. I spoke with his wife on Sunday morning, and she asked that we help her throughout this, throughout these times, and I told her that the county, and we was here for them, anything they need. So, you're right, let's keep them in our prayers as we go through hard times for them.
Through Georgia Municipal Association, I mean, he was a fine leader, and he wanted to help everybody. He was very supportive. If you can call on Mayor Price, he would give you advice. Of course, he was leading in Locust Grove for a long period of time, so he clearly knew Henry County. So, again, to his family, his friends, and just the council members there in Locust Grove, I sent out my loving condolences to you, and we're here to support any way we can. Thank you.
That is, this is a big loss to the Henry County community and to Locust Grove, and so just my condolences to his family and to the council members of Locust Grove, and if there's anything that they need during this time, please definitely reach out to us, we are here for them. But, just my sincere condolences to his family in this time of bereavement.
So, I want to thank you for being a good friend to me over the years. Our prayers are with Locust Grove and this family. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, county manager, for reminding me. With that, meeting is adjourned. I hope everyone have a great evening.